Good evening. I'm going to welcome everyone to Maitland City Council meeting for October 14th, 2024. As a reminder, please silence your electronic devices. And just a reminder for anyone in our large crowd who wants to speak tonight to complete a speaker card, so if you need that, we have those available. And also just as a preliminary announcement, the CRA meeting, which was originally noticed for tonight, is canceled for tonight because we do not have a quorum present and we need at least four members. So the CRA meeting that was on the agenda originally for tonight is rescheduled for October 20, 2024. Okay, and I'd like to invite everyone to join me in a brief moment of silence. Okay, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll turn it over to city manager to introduce our presentation for the evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We have Scott Howard here from Orange County School Board to talk to us a little bit about the half-cent sales tax extension. It's quickly approaching now, mail-out ballots are out now, and it's on the November election. So Scott, I'd like to turn it over to you. Welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Good to see you, as always.
I appreciate you all having me back. I feel like I was just here a little while ago talking about the one mil. And so it's good to be back. The half-cent sales tax is up again this year. It expires at the end of 2025. It was approved for 10 years back in 2014 and was originally approved in 2002, so it's not on a four-year cycle. The one mil was actually on a four-year cycle. This is on a 10-year cycle. And the board is asking simply the voters to decide whether to extend it for another 10 years. And it is for capital, I guess, just to go ahead and use. Just give you a little background vision mission. Obviously, I'm here because of the partnership that we have with the city of Maitland and collectively, obviously, the three schools that we have here in Maitland, Dahmerick, Maitland Middle, and Lake Sebelia are important to the city of Maitland. They certainly, the partnerships that we've had with them over the year, and they will benefit from the half-cent sales tax. Our 24,000-plus employees and 14,000-plus teachers make up. We are the eighth-largest district in the United States. We're the fourth-largest in Florida still here in Orange County. Give you a background. Here's a student enrollment. So our enrollment here in Orange County dipped after the pandemic. We saw it drop, about 10,000 students. It slowly started to climb back. We have seen a slight decrease in that climb due to changes in the family empowerment scholarships with allowing any student, regardless of prior public or attendance or socioeconomic status, to be able to get a scholarship. We've seen that those actually impact both the budget and enrollment. We do have students that come from 199 countries and speak 174 languages and dialects. We have 213 schools, added three new schools this year, Innovation High School Luminary and At Water Bay Elementary. So Luminary Middle, Innovation High School is our new, all three of these are new prototypes. Innovation was built with impact fees. As new schools are, we don't use the half-cent sales tax for new schools primarily, although at Innovation, we did use a portion of it to pay for about 14%. Orange County is an A school district, so rated an A by the state this past year. We're very proud of that. We have 88 A traditional schools in Orange County. 98% of our schools are rated A, B, or C by the state. So 2% are, we don't have any F schools within Orange County. We do have a few D schools that we certainly are putting additional attention on through the organizational structure of the district. Graduation rate in 2000 was 49.5. Today, our graduation rate is 95.5. That's the last time they reported our graduation rates amongst traditional high schools. Just to give you a little perspective, we've had individuals say that, you know, how does the half-cent sales tax for capital, how does that impact student achievement? How does it impact outcomes for students? Our former chair, Bill Soblet, used to say all the time that the environment in which students live in or learn in is as important as who they're learning from and how they're learning. And to be able to have technology and to be able to have facilities that are meeting those needs are important. I think the halfpenny sales tax went into place first time in 2002. And you can see, it's not the only thing, but it certainly contributed to the hard work of our teachers, our principals, our students in order to be able to increase our graduation rate. This is the ultimate metric for the school board and the district to ensure that we're graduating our students at a high rate. High ratings from Moody's and Fitch for our finances. We have our fiscal services as award-winning as well as our procurement. The vote is November 5th. The mail-in ballots are already out. Early voting begins on October 22nd, and it will be on the ballot. Give you a little idea before and after. So this is what some of our schools looked like before the half-cent sales tax. The original buildings, a lot of them were portable, portables connected by metal awnings to be replaced. In fact, we replaced 3,000 portables since 2000. Our portables are down 75% since 2002. We've been able to replace or renovate 136 schools. In fact, we're finishing up our Orange Technical College campuses. The last one will be South Campus, which is down on Oak Ridge and John Young. The East Campus will be finished up this year as well, and we'll be dedicating the West Campus actually in November. So those are the last of the 136. School construction in Florida, since 2011 to 2022, there was 222 schools built or rebuilt. 64 of them were in Orange County. The next closest was Miami-Dade at 15. So you can see the investment of our voters and citizens here in Orange County in voting for the half-cent sales tax has led to a number of schools being replaced. Here's some of our old campuses, new campuses throughout the district. There's Glen Ridge, Evans, Oak Ridge is on there. 75 schools will be 25 years or older by 2035. That would include Dahmerick, Lake Sebelia, and Maitland would be up for a renovation at some point over the next 10 years based on their last cycle. So they would be included in that as far as looking outward. Give you an idea of what, when we did our facility survey, what parents, employees were looking for. HVAC and ACs were the top of the list, technology, shaded playgrounds and bathrooms. All of those are addressed with the half-cent sales tax and will be through renovations. The capital needs for the next 10 years is $8.9 billion, almost $9 billion with a B. $4 billion will be paid for through the half-cent sales tax continuation if approved. And you can see the average cost of what an elementary costs and what it continues to do as we go up. So the renovation costs are much higher, especially since the pandemic. Here's our budgeted capital revenues by source. You can see the gold is the half-cent sales tax. If that were to go away, we would lose about 45% of our total revenue. Right now, the state doesn't provide any revenue for new construction or maintenance. All of that comes straight from either the 1.5 mils capital that property taxes, that's on the trim notice of property tax, or the half-cent sales tax. Impact fees pay for new schools and new school construction, so to deal with growth. So we really rely heavily on the half-cent sales tax when it comes to renovating our schools. And without it, there would be a lot of choices that would have to be made on how we would move forward as far as renovation and reconstruction and dealing with capital renewal. 50% of the sales tax revenues paid by tourists and nonresidents, people that live in counties around us, people that visit us from other states, other countries, pay 50% of that sales tax revenue. Since 2010, we've spent $2.6 billion on school construction. The impact to the community on that, in looking at, doing the analysis based on the fiscal impact to our county, that return is $4.1 billion. So $1.58 for every dollar of tax, $1.58 back into the economy. And the jobs, it's 1,850 jobs a year that's created by the half-cent sales tax here in Orange County. We do have an oversight commission, the Citizens Construction Oversight and Value Engineering. Our COV committee oversees. They've been in place since 1997. They oversee all expenditures of capital that we take forward, whether it's our 10-year capital plan and any expenditures that would come about as a result of capital renewal. The members are expertise in construction, engineering, finance, and auditing, and they cannot have any business or do any business with the district. They do oversee all of our construction and sales tax that's in effect. School safety and security is something that's top of mind, especially since 2014 with Sandy Hook. And we've seen tragedies that have happened throughout this country, even in our own state with Parkland. We've seen recently in Georgia, Texas with Uvalde. School safety and security has been a real focus for this half-cent sales tax, doing a lot of the infrastructural things that we need, whether it's cameras, ballers, hardening of facilities, making sure glass is protected and both inside and outside of the buildings. It doesn't pay for people, the half-cent sales tax, so it wouldn't pay for security officers or SROs or any of that. It doesn't pay for canines. We do have a canine, Coco, who's our weapon-stemming dog. Does not pay for that, but it does pay for the other infrastructural changes that we integrate into our buildings in order to provide additional security. This is, the ballot language hasn't changed since 2002, other than one addition. We have to share it now proportionally with charter schools. That has not been the case. This will be the first 10 years that we've actually had to share proportionately with charters. They are public schools. The legislature changed the language back in 2018 to require that. And so as part of the renewal, we're doing that. We've shared the one mil with charters since 2010. So this isn't something that we haven't done before, but it is on the ballot. Here's a vote for and against some of our newer schools, some of our older schools. These are newer renovated schools. Again, this money doesn't go towards building brand-new facilities, but to renovate the existing ones. Here's the vote. Vote by mail began on October 2nd. Deadline to register to vote is passed. October 21st through November 3rd is early voting, and November 5th is the general election. So I appreciate your time and giving me the time to be here today. I do want to say one thing is that the concern is awareness. We want to make sure that folks are aware that this is on the ballot. It's a four-page ballot. It's a long ballot, if you've seen it. This is the last item on the ballot. So I tell people that if you can remember it this way, so Orange County Public Schools is first in your heart, last on the ballot. So you've just got to remember that when you go to the ballot box. So just flip it over. You can vote on whatever you decide to do on the backside and then go back and vote for the rest of it. But it is awareness that it's out there and the impact that it does have, not only to our schools, to our schoolchildren, to those that teach in those schools, but also to this community when it comes to the economic impact. We do have, there's a flyer here that gives some information. It's informational about it. I know there's some here that were printed out for you all. And I, so we would be happy if you all would share those as well. It would be great to get the word out. If I may, Madam Mayor, just, I wanted to give an update real quick on the Maitland Fund with the foundation. But I'm happy to take any questions that you have about the half-cent sales tax and I'll give you a little update on the Maitland Fund that you all with the foundations.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Just makes too much sense to vote for. So yeah, pretty easy. Thanks for the presentation.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. So the Maitland Fund, which we, in partnership with the city council, put together a plan to invest $300,000. It was part of the developer agreement that you all had the money to move forward. And we've invested that money since 2018, and it has yielded $86,000 over that period of time through the investment, which has been distributed proportionately to the three schools in Maitland. So Dahmerick, Lake Sebelia, and Maitland have received their proportionate share of almost 86. It was 85 and change, $86,000. Without touching the corpus, the 300,000 is still in place. They actually were distributed $8,000 this year, which is the minimum guarantee that they would get based on the investment and when it's cashed in. So every year, we look at the enrollment at the end of the year, whatever the enrollment is. They get the percentage of that money that has earned off of the Maitland Fund corpus. The schools are guaranteed 8,000. If it drops below 3,000, it would go back up. But always, they would always get at least 8,000 per year. They've got, I think, it's earned as much as $34,000, I think, in one year, depending on the year. So just wanted to tell you that and how much that means to the schools because they use it for after-school activities, they use it for transportation, to pay for supplements for club sponsors, to pay for activities and things that they're doing before and after school. It just means a lot to those individual schools. If they get an extra $4,000 or $5,000 a year, it means a lot to them. So just wanted to let you know and give you an update on that. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Alec.
Quick question. Are there other school areas that do that, that have got like impact fees from developers or something to put it into an account? Do we have?
Actually, no. So the city of Maitland is unique. This money was geared towards, as part of an agreement, to be set aside for educational purposes, and it sat there for a long time. I know the former mayor was part of that discussions and having that. And so knowing what to do with it and invest it in a way where it could continue to grow and continue to generate revenue for years to come. It could have been dispersed and then spent and then be gone, and it wouldn't mean anything. At this point, no one would even remember it. But now that it's been in a fund and positioned that way, we've been able to take that money and every year distribute it through the foundation back out to those schools. So yeah, certainly encourage other cities, towns, municipalities to do something like that. It is definitely an investment in their schools and a way for them to help where there may not be money designated for that purpose, whether it's local, state, or federal dollars. But it's that philanthropic piece that helps to drive some of those programs. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Take care, Scott.
Okay, we're going to begin our public hearings, and I will send it to Madam Park to read the ordinance title. Our first. Come in.
Ordinance number 1432, and ordinance of the city of Maitland, Florida, amending ordinance number 1411 and direct regulations to the capital improvements program. Table 1, amending the governance and implementation element of the Maitland Comprehensive Development Plan 2035. To replace table 7.1, capital improvements program, to recognize the annual update of the city of Maitland's five-year CIP, amending this CDP relating to Orange County Public Schools, to recognize the annual update of the Orange County Public School 10-year capital outlay plan and providing for effective date.
Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce the item?
Sure, just real briefly. As we discussed at the last meeting, annually, we, after we adopt the budget, we take table 1, which is our five-year capital improvement plan from the budget, and incorporate that into our comprehensive development plan. We're required to have a financially feasible five-year capital plan. This ordinance accomplishes that. In addition to that, also adopts by reference the school board's capital plan and our account plan, which is also a state requirement. So we'll two birds with one stone with this work. So if you have any questions on it, I'll be happy to answer it.
Does anyone have any questions, Mad Council? I will open the public comment period. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And if there's no further discussion, our council will motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1432, Five-Year Capital Improvements Program, CIP 2025 to 2029. Say.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember Watt?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wardson?
Aye.
All right, we can start our next public hearing. And Madam Park, to read the ordinance title.
Ordinance number 1433, and ordinance of the city of Maitland, Florida, amending the Land Development Code, Section 2.5.2A, site plan. Section 2.5.4D, appeals to city council. Section 4.2.3A, one household living uses. Section 4.2.3B, three healthcare uses. Section 4.4A, air conditioner compressor unit. Table 5.2.5A, minimum number of off-street vehicular parking spaces. Table 5.416C2. Table 5.416c2, non-residential and mixed-use development sites, permit required. Section 6.2.3 parks and recreation sites. Section 7.1.9 definitions. Section 10.2.3 lots and yards. And section 10.3 definitions, providing for competition, severability, conflicts, and ineffectivity.
Thank you. And our city planner, Dan Mathis, is going to introduce the item.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Counsel. So last meeting, when the council introduced this, or we introduced this, council, we went over all these changes in great detail. So I'm just going to stand here and go straight to staff's recommendation. The staff recommends council approve ordinance 1433, amending this various sections of the code that was read into the record by the city clerk and the LDC. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Mathis? I will open the public comment period for this item. If there's any public comment. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And if there's no further discussion on counsel, a motion would be in order.
I'll go again. I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1433, land development code text amendments, various sections. Second.
All right. Madam Clark, do you call?
Councilmember Wild?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wartz?
Aye.
And we'll go to our third public hearing on the agenda. Madam Clark, do you read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number 1334, and ordinance of the city of Maitland, Florida, amending the Maitland Land Development Code, Article 5, development standards. Section 5.6, residential tree protection. Clarifying the differing purposes of minimum tree quantities and removal and replacement standards, providing for conflicts, severability, and ineffectivity.
Thank you. Mr. Mathis, would you like to introduce this item?
Again, similar. We went over these changes in great detail. A summary of them is up on the screen. Staff is recommending that council approve or adopt ordinance 1434, amending section 5.6 with an LDC. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone on counsel have any questions of Mr. Mathis? I will open the public comment period. Does anyone have public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And if there's no further discussion, a motion on this item would be in order.
Yep. Listen, I'm going to be happy to make this, and this is something back in 2019, Dan and I started talking about doing, and finally, I think we approved it, and it's a, it's a great, great addition to our city. So with that being said, I'm happy to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1434, amending the land development code, Article 5, development standards, section residential tree protection. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clark, do you call?
Councilmember Wild?
Aye.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wartz?
Aye.
Okay, and we will move to the fourth public hearing on the agenda. Madam Clark, will you introduce, will you read the ordinance title?
Ordinance number 1435, and ordinance of the city of Maitland, Florida, amending the city code to address consistency issues related to the implementation of the comprehensive land development code, update adopted in 2022, amending chapter 17.5, communications to the updated references to other sections of the land development code to conform to the comprehensive update, providing for complication, severability, conflicts, and ineffectivity.
Thank you. And Mr. Mathis, would you introduce this item, please?
Again, this one during introduction was read into the record with a lot of detail. It's really just clarifying since the adoption of the 2022 code, making references to the old zoning districts, bringing it back to the new districts. So with that being said, staff recommends council introduce, or excuse me, adopt ordinance 1435. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone on counsel have any questions of Mr. Mathis? I will open the public comment period. If there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And if there's no further discussion, a motion would be in order.
Let's close it out. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1435, amending chapter 17.5, communications of the Maitland city code. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clark, will you please call?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember Wild?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wartz?
Aye.
And that concludes our public hearings for the evening. We'll move to old business. Mr. City Manager, is there any old business to report?
No, ma'am.
We will move to our consent agenda. Are there any councilmembers who would like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, open the public comment period on the consent agenda. If anyone has comment in the public on consent items number 3 through 8, we just turn to the podiums. Seeing none, I will close the public comment on the consent agenda. And if there's no further discussion on counsel, Madam Clark, will you please call roll as to consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second your motion. There you go.
There's a motion in a second. Madam Clark, will you please call?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Aye.
Councilmember Wild?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wartz?
Aye.
All right. We will move to our public period. This is the time where anyone in the public can make comment on anything not listed on the agenda. If there's any comment to be made? I see movement.
Thank you. It's lovely. I didn't feel like calling, sorry. They opened down 108 Angelo Court. I wanted to address a couple different things, or several different things. Not the least of which is Scott Howard's recognition of that very elegant solution that we had. Mike, you guys remember the book? Or? And that, and want to salute Sharon Anselma and Mary Lawrence. That were, that were very critical as a part of that process. And that could not have worked any better than we picked the light six spot of numbers. Number two. And for Chief Manuel, I wanted to thank him. I had an incident occurred several weeks ago on, with a road hazard, a problem with my car, right on top of the interstate. And what's his name? Tom?
Tom Gaddy.
Yeah. He was terrific. So Maitland Police bailed me out of an ugly, ugly spot and did a great job of doing it. Finally, and this doesn't come off, and it'll come easy for me, wanting to praise Duke Energy. Because I testified for the Public Service Commission in Tallahassee against them three different times and spared no betrayal. But in this case, well, I don't know how or why, in my little burg over in Hollyanna Shores, nothing ever went down. I had power, I had internet, I had all the things I needed. And having been brutally honest, and still am, for a for-profit utility, that their performance in this particular situation was noteworthy. I've been in that house 32 years. And so I don't probably complain 31 of them. You know, so, you know, it's, it was a terrific experience, actually. And so I wanted to finish addressing those three things. Nice to go six and deposit, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public period portion of the evening and move on to reports. City attorney, do you have any reports?
No.
It's always good. Is? City manager?
If I could, I'd just like to give a quick rundown of where we are with storm response. As you all know, we've been talking, as we saw this storm coming in our direction, coming ashore, the public works department was mobilized, gotten, trimmed trees, cleaned our drains, cleaned our streets out so our drainage systems wouldn't get clogged. We do have some isolated areas of flooding in the city. Our staff mobilized the portable generators for our lift stations that don't have current backup power. We know that there's always issues with Duke Energy, and we can't afford to have those to go down. Based upon experience with the last four storms, I think we're probably better prepared for this storm than we have been for any other storm.
Amen.
And I think, you know, and we were preparing for the worst. We were preparing for a Charlie level event when this thing was coming ashore. And those of you that are around during Charlie, it was a monumental disaster. During the event, chief brought in a double shift for the police department. We like to maintain a very visible presence during storms, especially as the power goes out as a deterrent to property crimes and to assist with related emergencies. After the report, there were no property crimes during the event, again, as has been for the past several storms. Chief Morton also brought in a double shift for fire. Since we didn't know how long this event was going to be, or how the winds were going to be, or how much rain we were going to get, we always like to err on the side of caution. So what we learned from Ian was that sometimes staff that's going to write in the storm out can't make it in for storms. So we staff up, so assuming that those folks won't be able to make it in, so we'll be able to still keep fresh firefighters on the street to respond to emergencies. Public Works, as you all saw, brought in extra staff and grounds, arbor, stormwater, water and wastewater to be able to respond to all situations that would arise. All of our on-duty staff responded extremely well during and in the wake of the storm. Police did a great job not only notifying the emergency operations center when trees came down and they were blocking roads, but also pulled out the chainsaws and cut them up and cleared the roads. That's also true of the fire department. They were taking immediate action to identify the problem areas and move obstacles so access for public safety vehicles could be maintained. So stellar performance on all three fronts, police, fire, and public works. I also have to say that our water and sewer systems were up and running for the entire storm event. We had isolated areas of flooding, which we know where those are, but they were not as extensive as they had been in the past. And we had no reports of structure flooding. Now we're in recovery mode. We had public works crews out later in the afternoon Thursday before anyone else in central Florida had public works crews out as the storm passed, even to the extent that local TV networks noticed what we were doing, came out and did a series of reports on our response to the, the storm event. So our crews were out prior to anyone else being out. Friday and Saturday, they all worked to finish clearing the streets, cleaned up our parks to make them safe, and began picking up small debris in the streets so our street sweepers could get out, or contract sweeper could get out to get the small stuff, ideally to keep that out of the way. There's a large amount of nutrients that were sitting in the streets. So we were out getting that stuff picked up. We continued to get that picked up before the rains come in and gets washed into our storm systems and into our lakes. As a side note, I want to especially recognize Maria Castro Soto and Miranda Gagnon, who work out the community park. Maria handles it on weekends, and all the part-timers that work to get the community park up and running. The public works department moved in quickly to move all the stuff out of the parking lot, get it cleared out. But then Maria and Miranda and the part-timers worked by hand to clear everything out to make it safe for kids so it can open as soon as possible. So they did a great job coordinating that so that could be opened today. Today, as you probably saw, as our newsletter and social media posts have said, we do have a contract debris hauler in town picking up the big trees that came down during the storm event, so that's already started. Lake Destiny has been approved as a storm debris site for our contract waste hauler, so they don't have to travel to the landfill and make the lines there. They'll be able to direct all to Lake Destiny and store it there before we break it down and take it to the landfill. So that should speed up the storm debris removal. Waste haul will be running yard trash. There's a great deal of yard trash out there. The message that we've gotten out on bagging, containering, and tying up your lawn debris for Waste Pro has gotten out there. There's a huge amount. And Waste Pro, even when they ran four trucks last Saturday, wasn't able to make it through the city, again, because of the large amount and the lines of the landfill. Because Seminole County was closed, they were direct hauling or taking it to Orange County. Seminole County is now open, but they're even saying that based upon the volumes of yard debris that are out there, it's going to take several weeks for all of their customers to be able to get that picked up. So we're preaching patience to our residents. It will get picked up, just a matter of time before we get around. We're still planning on running again on Saturday, and we'll continue to do that until the, the waste gets picked up. The key points that we're pushing out today are that you need to differentiate between your typical lawn trash, your, your bag bundles and containerized stuff, and your storm debris. Those need to be separated if they're the curb line, because if they're bags within your debris pile, our hauler will bypass them or monitor, won't let them pick things up that have either your playset or your fence or bags in those debris piles. You need to separate those. And you can keep them away from fire hydrants or utility poles because the grapple won't be able to get to those. They don't want to take a chance of damaging any of the other utilities. And to, of course, be patient. I think we've done a really good job of pushing the word out, keeping people informed on the communication lines. Robert's done a great job of that. We'll continue to do that, keep people updated. But that's where we are as of today, and keeping up data as, as time goes on. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Mark, where on Lake Destiny are they doing that?
Lake Destiny's off of here.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ring.
You're welcome.
There are part-time workers?
No.
And are there any councilmen?
I got a couple things. One, I got a question for Cliff real quick. I've been so inundated with amendment 3, amendment 4, amendment 2, blah, 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 that somebody yesterday asked me about amendment 6, and I was like, what's amendment 6? They read it to me. Is there any short, is that?
I don't know my number, but tell me. I know four.
It's the one about if you're running for office and?
Oh, public financing?
Yes.
All I can tell you is if you believe the Sentinel, vote against it. If you believe me, vote for it. But the reason, my opinions on that are simply because my view is based on the fact that you've got a two-party system that keeps everybody else out with public financing. There's a possibility of somebody who's independent being able to gather enough money to run. What the Sentinel has said on the opposite view is it ain't working and it's not, it's not bringing in the intended result, so don't do it. So why continue to fund it? I, I just, I guess I'm an optimist, but that's all I can tell you about.
Right. Okay. Thanks. And then the other is, is one, I want, I want to agree with Mayor McDonald is that, and I was thinking this today, I was like, I can't believe I'm going to really say this tonight. But yeah, Duke was amazing. I cannot believe how fast things got back up and everybody had power here quickly. I think, you know, on Saturday, the last person in our area got power, and that was because the power line fell. Everybody else had power already. Also, the, the guys who work for Waste Pro, I just want to put this out there, they're awesome. They, I talk to them all the time. They are working their tail off to make sure that we're good. They put a lot of effort in their work. They move, they, they work really hard. So if you see one and they're coming by, stop thanking for what they're doing, because if they didn't do it, that trash would, all those yard cuttings would just sit there and you'd never get it cleaned up. So we appreciate them. Want to say thank you to please fire public works. Fantastic job. Mark, your whole crew did awesome. And I reached out to my friend Christine with the Sheraton and thanked her for, you know, having the police department stay there. And she was even like, yeah, we'll open up a little area for them where they want to watch TV and sit and chill. And so they're a big supporter of the city of Maitland, so I want to thank them also. And yeah, thanks, Scott, for, for coming in. I think that's it for me. I won't belabor it, but good job.
Yes, thank you, everyone. And I will repeat all the others. Like I'll say ditto to a lot of the points of it, Mark and Dan's being, but I know that it's a thankless job sometimes because sometimes people focus more on the things they don't have or don't have yet, which is understandable. There are a lot of have yet, which is understandable, there are a lot of inconveniences and anxieties that come with the storms for some people, more than others, for sure, but there's so much that is going on that people, it's easy to take for granted, myself included, prior to getting the, the daily updates from Mark that I get, and, you know, all of us up here get during the storms and, and all of that, but I, I just wanted to say, thank you, we see you. All right, and with that, we're adjourned.
Shout out. Good job. Oh, this is going to be ringing right here. Oh, yeah.